Good evening, everyone. And welcome to the Monday, December 16, 2024, Planning Board Meeting for the County of Rynebeck. Welcome to the last Planning Board Meeting of the year. And thanks to our planning board members for being here, not only tonight, but here this, it seems like a long year. We have the OR, the law here. And I know there are changes to the agenda. So we're supposed to be in the agenda list there. Have you received Jim's meeting notes? Any questions or comments? Then have a motion to accept the notice. Motion second, all those in favor.
I agree.
Close extension of motion carries. We have two sets of minutes, that of November 18th and of December 2nd. Do you have any edits, corrections, additions to either set for the minutes?
I move to accept both.
Motion?
Second.
Second, all those in favor.
I agree.
Close extension motion carries. Correspondents and announcements. Anything to come here on the board? All right, very well. We'll move into the new application portion of this evening's meeting. The first new application is that of Rynebeck 15260 Lane, Site Plan and Special Use Permit for an accessory structure. Can you introduce yourself and tell us what you like to do?
My name is Ryan Morrison. I'm here from Ty and Bond and representing Dr. Gus Abuja and Rynebeck Equine regarding a proposed site plan amendment. We're really here for a couple of different things, but the property had previously had site plan, site plan improvements on site that were not included in any site plan amendment. So a portion of this application is to bring the property up to standards with a new site plan amendment. And then second, there's some proposed improvements that Rynebeck Equine would like to propose on the property. And we've included that in this application. The proposed improvements that we're looking to make for the property, the proposed improvements that have happened to the property are two 576 square feet shed row barns, one 180 square foot storage building. There's been some signage added to the site over the years that has never been quantified or shown in any of the site plan amendments. And then there's a proposed trailer parking area that's been added to the site that was not previously approved by this board. In addition to those site plan improvements, there are a proposed paddock barn, which is about 1,080 square feet on the site. That paddock barn will serve a number of purposes, but Rynebeck Equine is an animal hospital for horses. And so that will allow them to keep their horses on site a little bit longer while they're receiving medical treatment. That paddock barn will be out by the other two paddocks and will remove one paddock from the site. Other site plan improvements that are being proposed that are not currently on site include an 800 square foot access road with some minor grading to make that gradual down to the paddock barn. And a note that's not shown on this plan is that paddock barn will have electricity. So we can turn on a light inside that paddock barn. So we'll have to update the site plan to show that electrical line. Signs that are on site, there's a total of 28 signs on site that we've tried to quantify and show images of in the application materials. These signs were added for various reasons over the years, but mostly to help direct traffic on site. One of the concerns that we have is that these trucks often arrive late at night. There's residential properties adjacent to this property. And if those trucks miss a turn, turning around can be quite difficult. And so we've tried to add a lot of signage to the site over the years in order to get traffic back to where it belongs. So we're not bothering the neighbors. That is the summary of the improvements. Does the board have any questions that they want us to discuss? Or want me to go in more detail about any of the items?
First, I'll ask Jim to give his comments.
Sure.
Anyway, I will project my voice. So as everyone knows, the applicant submitted to the CBA for a couple of variants, as we talked about that at the last meeting. The paddock is a fourth accessory structure, so it requires site plan special use permit approvals. This property is also, I want to make sure it was adjacent to a National Register of Close Property, which is the property right at the front here. I probably mispronounced it with a little familiarity.
And also for Lucy.
So that's certainly a consideration of the county when they're thinking about this. Otherwise, I think it's all pretty straightforward. There's no issues with setbacks or obviously area coverage. One thing we did get from you was a fully AF form. I actually think this is a type 2 use. So I'd prefer to get some of that short form for us the next time. Otherwise, it creates confusion. So I don't see a reason why we'd have a fully AF form and do a fussy groupie on this project. I think we do the short form on this one. Other than that, the CBA, you know, variants are required. That's really about all I have.
On your first comment, you were talking about a sports court.
That's a type 2, sorry. It's something about type 2. I should say paddock barn. I know there was some concerns in one of the letters regarding whether there was additional site improvements down the road, if there was a master plan for the site. One of the things when we got a violation notice for this property, we had a conversation with the applicant and said, is there anything else? And that's how the paddock barn came up. So I think the paddock barn is the extent. This is the master plan for this site. At this time, there's no other, no improvements that are going to be recommended for the site.
The only other question they did actually, just maybe discuss pre-cut. I don't know if you've been there, someone else. It's just the reason for the driveway coming off, you know, to here, coming off of this driveway, you know, maybe it's not that busy, but it just seemed like it might make more sense and certainly be less disturbance, not that it's an issue on site. It's large to turn it around and have it come from the parking lot. Obviously, you park here. But obviously, if you're backing trailers in here, just as a thought that it's not the best part on the driveway where the bird comes in. But obviously, you're not talking about the height, you know, traffic road or whatever.
It's within the gated portion of the property. So the, right in this corner right here is a gate which controls access to the site. So it's not like we have vehicles flying up. That gate's very slow to open. They should be stopping on the corner. The reason we didn't show it coming straight off the building is parking is really a premium at this site on it. No, if anyone's ever had the opportunity to go there during the day, but Gus has a number of vehicles parked there and stopped there maybe two, three weeks ago. And they're out of parking. So like losing parking at this point would be detrimental. I don't want to add more parking to the site. I swear, I'm trying to minimize impact. So we left it there. If there's another idea, Gus has any comments to that. I'll let him speak to it. But we were kind of hoping to leave it in that area.
Justifications why you're there, there's no more parking. There could be less, you know, circumstantial parking.
Planning board members. Would be water in the paddock?
No water in the paddock, just electric.
Anyone else?
How much of this exists?
So the things that currently exist on a site are the two shed rows. There's a storage building that's up past the pier and a parking area. And that's the improvements that have been already completed on site. And it's a new access road and paddock barn would be new improvements to the site.
Okay, and that's, and you need the variance for that, for the side?
Correct.
You aren't setbackting.
There's also a variance for the setback as it relates to the storage. That one, yes, that one's for the paddock. Yes.
And this is also in front of the principal structure. And as you discussed, the review of this from the CBA, we really almost know where you can put, you know, a barn like this without being in front of the structure unless you're trying to squeeze it back here. Very much anywhere you put the paddock barn in the property. Which is that most of the variance. The other ones for some.
You all been before the ZBA already?
We've met with the ZBA in the November meeting, who will be meeting with them Wednesday night to further that application material. At some point, we're probably going to have to wait or see care of the rest with this board. But yeah, we're in front of the ZBA. And so far, we've received sign of minor comments, nothing of any alarm from that board at this time.
What's the timeline on the meeting?
Next one's public hearing. So it follows well, then?
They won't make a determination until January?
January, like, we'll be January. We'll have a public hearing for, on Wednesday. And the only thing that might delay this, we'll have, because I mentioned to the planning board, or to the ZBA, that the planning board would likely be taking the agency for seeker. So we'll just have to make the seekers done before we can, the ZBA can choose.
I'm just thinking, what do we want to schedule the meeting as?
January.
Given the process, does the board need to decide themselves, leave agent tonight to send that to ZBA or?
Hopefully, in a procedural tonight.
Does that make sense?
We're agreeing with the procedural.
Okay.
You have to pour concrete for this, right?
Yeah, there will be a concrete footing for that paddock barn. The other buildings are already in place. And some of them are, I think they're up on like gravitizers.
Anyone have a question? Anyone else? Jim, I think you have a draft procedural resolution.
Draft procedural resolution. Rynebeck to Rynebeck Geek Line for set plan special use permit and town code chapter 125. For construction of the paddock, approving three accessory structures, signage, 260 Lane and the RC5. Second, the application is supported by the CBA for review. Classifying the action is type 2, which coordinated by the owner following the due time required. Spending the public hearing for January 7th.
21st.
What's that?
21st.
Oh, great, great, 21st.
Which is the 2nd?
We'll send this to the CAB for review. I thought maybe we'd go to AIPAC, just giving the location. This is a national store property. Dutchess County Planning since it is site planned. And we need two planning board members to go with this.
I'll go. Okay. It's okay. Thank you. Just let me know when you're done. All right, may I have a motion?
So?
Second, all those in favor.
Aye.
Close extension motion carries. Thank you. We'll be in touch to arrange a site visit.
Awesome. Thanks so much, guys.
Thank you.
Shake your hand.
Have a nice holiday.
You too.
The next application this evening is that of Simon Sassenberg retaining James Street Site Plan and Special Use Permit repairs and improvements.
Good evening. My name's Sean Kemp. I represent Simon Sassenberg in connection with this application. Mr. Sassenberg needs site plan and special use permit for approval for repair to his front porch. Installation of some bluestone in the rear of the property. There was also, prior to him purchasing the home, I think the previous, one of the previous owners installed a mini split that wasn't depicted on the previous site plan. So that's now depicted on the new site plan. And then there's also an old well house. It's not, well, doesn't serve the house. But in front of the property, it's starting to crumble and falling to disrepair. So Mr. Sassenberg would like to make some corrections to that and remove the old wooden structure that's sitting on top of that. And the front porch was severely damaged by termites. That's the need for the front porch work. Maybe you can see some of the damage. Any questions from the board?
Jim?
I merely just think this is a review related to store preservation, consistency with neighborhood property character. I didn't find anything related to planning issues. My understanding is that work is being done because the contractor was hired and then found the rotting wood, started to do work, and then there was a stop work order put on the property, right?
That's my understanding as well right now.
The property dates back according to partial access to 1860. If they're modeled, it was done in 2020, including exposed porch. And then I just had a quick question. The abandoned well house, I didn't catch that in the application. Is the proposal to remove, remove entirely and bury it or replace it with something else?
So the idea is to first take off the top and inspect to see what the status is of things. If the well is above ground, then he wants to re-point the stone that's around it. And then kind of cap it off so nobody can get injured. But if it's below ground, then it would just be covering the entire well.
Is that this, right here, right against the street?
Yeah, that's up towards that. That's the front. I don't want to misspeak.
Do we have a picture of the well? Do we have a picture of the well? Did you hear that?
In this, in this second, I don't know if I put a picture of the well house there or not in my supplemental.
Do you know the age of the well?
I'm sorry?
Do you know the age of the well?
Well, the, the structure that sits on top of the well, it doesn't seem to be related to, it's not historic. I know that much. But it was there when you purchased the property.
May I ask how you know it's not? I'm not, I'm not challenging you. I'm just.
Just from, just from looking at it. I can, I'll supply pictures. You'll see that it's not something that looks like it's been around for a very long time.
Okay, and I'd like to add to the application.
Sure.
Because there are several well houses in the area that are contemporaneous, with the houses or certainly of historic nature.
That's not wrong.
You don't have pictures of the house without the well house? And then, like, from 60s or something like?
No, my client just purchased the property a few years ago, right after the communication was performed that Jim referenced. But I'll get you, I'll ask just to see if those pictures exist. To the extent that they do, I have no problems submitting them to you. And then I'll also get up-to-date pictures of the well house. That I certainly do.
Questions on the planning board? The term damage restricted to the front of the porch, is it the entire porch?
The entire porch. Yeah, it's pretty extensive.
Behind it, what about the house behind it? In terms of termite damage?
There were, there was some termite damage inside of the house that had been repaired.
And is this the current state? Or has that work commenced and the porch that we see in the pictures been demolished?
The porch, I do not believe it's being completely demolished. The stop work order came in mid-work.
I see.
So the plan is to take the old porch off, right?
That's.
And replace it with what?
A new porch that's in the architectural drawings. Which is consistent, I'm not an architect, but to my eye, it seems pretty consistent with what was there.
Anyone else? Procedure resolution?
This is due to procedure resolution for the application by Simon Sassenberg for site plan special use permit or town code chapter 125 for porch repair. I would say associated improvements, changes. And related, I think we will need to know exactly what he wants to do with that well house for the approval.
Okay, so as far as?
He's going to rebuild it or just tear it down. And, you know, whatever that's going to be is to be documented. So it's on the site plan.
Okay.
He's have to know what plans are. So he's going to have to do a little work before. Preferably before the public hearing next month. Let us know what his plans are.
So to the extent that that requires the removal of, I think part of the problem was in my discussions with the client is that he has to take the top off to see what's in there. Didn't want to disturb anything without permission.
If there's no access door, not doors, it's like fully closed.
That's, I believe so, correct. I can verify all this information though regarding the well house and get it to the board in no time. But that's not a problem. I just didn't, after we received the stop work order, I didn't want anything else going on with the property that could raise any further issues. So I'll see what needs to be done in order to, for him to be able to make some determination. If there's nothing too invasive, we can do that. If it's something else, then I'll relay that to the board.
Yeah, maybe you can pull up until the site visit and that might help inform any possible, sure. Or just, I think the site plan is all passed, represented, obviously.
Could you investigate whether the superstructure on top can be just lifted off?
That's what I'm going to do, yeah. To see what, how invasive that process is. Obviously, if it's not too bad, then that's not a big deal. If it's something more, then I'll let you guys know and we'll take it from there.
So procedure resolution, except for the application supporting the fact that it's under review, classifying the action as type 2 under seeker. Which coordinated by the owner of the quality review is not required. It's going to the public hearing for January 21st, 2025. We'll send it to the CAB for review. We'll send it to the WAC for the job within the old RP area. And we'll go to AIPAC and Dutchess County Planning. And we need two planning board members to go to the site visit.
I'll go.
Do you prefer to do the site visit before the public hearing or after or?
Generally, we do it after the meeting and before.
Okay.
So we're able to report on the site visit.
Sure. So in coordinating that site visit, if you just want to contact me directly, that's probably the most efficient way to go about it.
Either Tom or at least you'll be a hundred here.
Very good.
May I have a motion?
Certainly.
Got a motion in a second, all those in favor.
Aye.
Close extension motion carries.
Thank you very much.
You're very welcome. The next scheduled new application this evening is that of Nathan Kingsley for 20 Rynebeck, L. Ward. We have discovered that what we have received is incomplete application. And we have been in touch with Mr. Kingsley. And we are communicating what he needs to get into us in order to be able to reschedule this. Hopefully, I don't, I didn't see anything. Hopefully, we can get everything and he would like to go on the January 21st agenda. Everything's in. All right, that concludes the new application portion of the meeting this evening. Next, we'll move into the public hearing. And first up is that of Emily Dyer. 52 to 54 Morton Road, Site Plan and Special Use Permit. Art's getting in support.
Good evening. There's nothing new to report since last meeting. We, obviously, as you guys know, have made some pretty significant changes to the plan in order to sort of, you know, what the board had suggested, said regarding their concerns. And we're going to the CBA tomorrow. They had informed us at the last meeting that they closed the public hearing at the last meeting and said that they would be voting on the matter tomorrow. Well, today's Monday.
Wednesday.
Wednesday. Sorry, I finished at 1:00. Not sure what day it is. Yeah, so that's pretty much it. Sort of going through everything.
I would say needs to go through the green tent. And then, for the more than visual questions?
The only color I have, and I don't think I've seen an updated one, is that we're still showing a detail for the three walls in a row. It's going to be related to be changed, just the one.
Yeah, I can, yeah, I can guess that most of it is not, I'm all over there.
Right, so that, that needs to be changed. And then I actually don't know the status of any comments from Christian from St. Gail at the hearing. Have you talked with him or?
I haven't talked to him. I called Gretchen this afternoon and she had said that.
He has sent over the, the, the.
That he, okay.
Do you, do you receive the notification?
Yeah.
Or Christian?
There's an email that he wrote.
Okay, did you share it with us?
No.
Okay.
I would have.
Why don't you just give it into the record so everybody's heard it?
No, I think for me, it's just a minor change of the detail on the plan, which doesn't change the site plans themselves. So I don't think that's really a big issue.
Just possibly say remove it before.
Right, before, before. Right, before it gets signed. Right, decide to move that, make sure that it's got the right.
See, so they don't really have any more engineering-related concerns on this one. This is a bit of a scopeless stuff I usually review. There don't appear to be any potential impacts to neighboring properties. And then it comes about bringing down the height of the wall. So that shouldn't be an issue. They appear to need to bring in 750-plus yards material based on their cut and fill counts. The driveway now has some entrance pillars, about 130 feet up the road. And they have provided some section view through the walls on the cheap floor that it's addressed that they provided at the previous meeting. I don't think there would be any visual impact since this is all uncharted property, other than the tree removal, which has already happened.
Any other questions? Is there anyone in the public wishing to comment on this application? On the line?
They're very busy this time of year. I, they're very hard to get a hold of actually this time of year. They're corporate attorneys and this is a very busy time of year currently. The, last I spoke to them, they were happy that it was moving in the right direction. But that was a couple of weeks ago.
Okay. So we're here tonight to decide about conditional. Can you give us any indication of what these details is?
Sure. So as Ben mentioned, at the November meeting, the public hearing was opened at the CBA. No comments were received, but the hearing was closed. The board has directed me to draft the resolution to approve the variances. I have done that. It's posted online. We'll be discussing that when they need. But I anticipate it will be voted on in favor of the resolution.
So we conclude this evening. Adopt conditional approval related to the CBA's approval. If everyone is in the room, you're coming back.
I would like to have that motion.
Again, no public comment?
Oh, move to, move to close the public hearing.
Can you have a motion? Got a second?
Second.
All those in favor.
Aye.
Close extension now.
Now I would like to make a motion to accept the
Conditional.
Conditional approval resolution.
Do you have a second? Jim wants to read it.
Let's go on with it. No, no, great. But I appreciate that. The only thing I want to know is that should the CBA for any reason not provide a football Wednesday, we would have to come back and start the process over.
This is so much fun, the first time I've shared it.
No, 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 no.
No, I'm serious. It feels like I've been here forever. Not in a bad way, but, no.
So you're willing to take that?
Yeah.
Just wanted to get that.
Okay.
So with that, I have the resolution. This one. Approval resolution for Emily Dyer for construction of the sports court, rating to create defensive play areas, installation of retaining walls and driveway pillars of 52 to 54 Morton Road in the HP20. Reforming the Act of Site Plan or Seeker in respect to special use permit finding of working intended use consistent with general standards for special use permits and granting the requested special use permit with respect to application for site plan approval finding of working intended uses consistent with Town Code Chapter 125. And approving the application materials dated June 11th, June 12th, 2024. And I just think it's a revision date up, it's revised again. Subject to an updated plan that provides a new retaining wall detail for signature. And then condition on ZBA approval, which we, which is coming on Wednesday. And then authorizing the planning board chair to stamp and sign the both-site site plan on the applicant satisfaction of the three conditions listed there. In addition, as we always note now, in taking this action, the planning board authorizes the planning board secretary to provide the approval resolution to the applicant along with details on next steps required to finalize the planning board process. And authorizes others to issue the claims necessary. We remind the applicant that all plan sketches or the materials submitted to the town of Rynebeck Building Department for any required permits, including CO and some shift of completion much match the materials approved by the planning board. Anything that does not, or is inconsistent, could be rejected.
Have a motion.
Certainly.
Second.
Second.
How far we go, Greg?
Aye.
And then?
Aye.
Tim.
John.
Aye.
Charlie.
Hi.
Hi. Thank you, Ben. Thank you for the cooperation through this whole process.
Thank you.
The next public hearing this evening is a Metro and Bank, 70 to 100 Daz Lane, minor subdivision, and then it's previously code subdivision, that's not partial listed. Who? Who's the role? Oh, I'm, I'm sorry, I did. I checked it off. So let me go backwards to Christopher Heinz, who has the Morton Road Site Plan Special Use Permit.
Good evening, Subs Tickle with Mark Primm, S B E L S P C. Here this evening to represent Christopher and Laura Heinz and their application for the pool pavilion. Last time Mark was in front of this board, he had provided you with the information that we have obtained our Z B A approval for the project. And this board didn't have any additional questions or requests for additional information. And we're here this evening to let you know that we have obtained apartment approval, which was the last portion of the process. If there are any questions, you can certainly answer those.
I believe that's all we were waiting for. So I think. Did you just previously question the public hearing or? Is there anyone here from the public? Planning board members, any additional comments on this? Public, anyone wishing to comment on this? Hearing no comments. I have a motion to close the public hearing. Some. Motion, second, all those in favor? Opposed, extension, motion carries. Now, Jim, we have a approval resolution?
New approval resolution for your consideration tonight for the application by Christopher Laura Heinz for Site Plan Special Use Permit under Town Code Chapter 125. Construction of the pool pavilion associated landscaping improvements including the gardens, sanitary, and large supply connection to the existing house, 360. Reaffirming the actions type 2 under seeker, which for the environmental quality review is not required with respect to the application for special use permit. Finding the proposed work and intended use consistent with general standards for special use permits and granting the special use permit conditions on Site Plan Approval. After the board respects the Site Plan Approval, finding the working intended use consistent with Town Code Chapter 125, approving the application of recent materials and Site Plan by Mark Primm, S B E, dated August 26th. And the architecture plan for Marion Thompson, also dated August 26th. Authorizing the planning board chair to stamp and sign the Site Plan subject to the three conditions listed there. Taking the action further authorizing the planning board secretary to provide the approval resolution to the applicant with details on next steps and approvals to the local units. And reminding the applicant that all plan sketches or the materials submitted to Town Code back plan departments must match those given to the building.
Yeah, no motion. So both. Motion, second. Second. Paul, board, please. Hi, Sharon, I, Sean.
Aye.
Rick.
Aye.
And then.
Aye.
And we'll go back.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. I will agree with you. Good call, Dan. Now, mench subdivision. Mench Ryan that is 70 to 100 Daz Lane, minor subdivision, and then it's previously planned subdivision. You're up.
All right.
Just in time.
Yeah, sorry about that.
Do you want to give us an overview again of what you're composing?
Yeah, this is a, this is the. We go back to the first one. It's an existing three block subdivision with a private road that runs off of Mill Road. It's called Dos Link. And. So I might have to turn on the side, just switch on the left side. This right here is Mill Road. And then this is a private road. Right now, we've got one lot here, one lot here. There's an improved lot that is being. And what we're looking to do is really just take. Next. So basically, what we're looking to do is rather than have a few lots up here, we're just looking to have one lot back here, one lot here. And then the remainder of the property would be this single lot right here. So it's three lots, but they're just three lots there we can figure out the same private road.
Thank you, Jim.
Nothing new, just want to note that Jonathan has security back in June 12th, 2023 in the development area from the town board. So that, that need is taken care of. And other than that, if you're ready to, if you're ready to report the approval resolution, we just need to go through, I'm sure it's a certain form of the resolution.
Planning board, site visit? Tom and I did it last week. It actually makes sense. The lots are a little bit better location. Looking at the screen.
Yeah, it just makes sense what we're doing.
Planning board members, any questions or comments? Anyone here from the public? Yes, or would you come to the microphone?
Sure.
My name is Karen Spahn. I live at 245 Mill Road. It would be. The lot number three would be directly, I guess, east of my apartment. So I'm right here and this is lot three. So my only question is, does. I assume that the dotted line is the. Is the indication of the setbacks. Is that correct?
Could be building up more.
Right, and the gray area, the proposed building site is, is, would the purchaser be limited to that? Or could it be anywhere within the, the building envelope?
Could technically be anywhere within the building envelope, but since that is shown on the map, that's where they would consistently go. Anything else would be on the, for spokes.
Can see the, well, yeah, obviously, slugs and also flood, 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 so. But. It, it's the most sensible, obviously, is, but it would not necessarily be limited to that?
I mean, it's shown as the proposed building area of the plans. It should be, I, I don't know. I don't know. Actually, I have our attorneys here on the verge of them. I mean. We have a site plan, we have a proposed lot line adjustment. We're showing the building envelope with the dotted line. But we also have the proposed building area showing in the shaded area. Would that be legally binding on someone to build a house? Or would they just have to stay within the building envelopes?
Or would they have to come back before the score?
Yeah, I don't know the answer to that question. I'm not, I have to look through what they're. And, and is, is there any? Any conservation limitation if we're clearing trees or anything of that sort? Can, can a lot be clear cut down to the kill or? Shouldn't be, but I mean, couldn't?
We're reviewing this for, for the purposes of re aligning the lot lines.
Yeah.
Not for houses per se, there aren't houses proposed at this time. If a lot of trees were to be proposed to be taken down for the purposes of this, that'd be something the building department can see when the application and the impact determine how that would.
So, so that's a different board?
No, the building department downstairs in the town hall.
Oh, I see.
And they would decide, I'm sorry.
Would it be public hearing, so for that or no?
It depends on what the building department would see may or may not be needed based on the town code.
But the, the town hall, it's pretty dangerous.
So, so there shouldn't be a clear cut. But if they wanted to put somewhere on the proposed building area, the part of the area, well, that would be something that would probably be tied with the building department. And then determine if they have to come back before the client. But that would, again, it would, it's, it would depend on the situation.
Right, because my, my only question is.
John, can you add any comments on those questions?
No, and we don't, we don't have design drawings on any of these lots. We just, right now, we're just going to do a lot on the rest of it. And really, the, the precursor to this, a lot of ways, was some conversations we had with Winnicky about what the best building areas on the property were. It's under easement and so it's going to be some time with the building to ease it on the road. And in walking through the property, where there's strong recommendations to take focus any additional with it on these two areas because there's more of a little facility goes down the thread of the structure on the backside of the property. It looks out to the middle, sits really behind where the former building areas and former lots work. So there's, and our government's taking the recommendation.
Are you on your, is the whole property under easement?
Uh, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, so it's limited to three lots.
Right.
And any change in the building areas, we require a Winnicky look and approval.
Yeah.
Are you following that, sir?
I, I was not aware of anything about it neither.
Yeah, there's a conservation easement on the entire property. Okay. Which, which my father put into place. And so it's limited just to three lots. Really, we're just looking to reconfigure where those three lots are located. But we went through this with Winnicky and we got approval from Winnicky to make the adjustments.
Do, do you have that in the boardroom? Okay, Jim's checking, so we have that in writing. And Winnicky is looking at what we're saying. Should in the future, they wish to make changes to this building envelopes that we're seeing here, Winnicky would have to weigh in again.
Correct.
Well, the building envelopes won't change, the dotted lines won't change. That's what I told him. I assume Winnicky's had off on the map on this site plan. So if something was proposed, it's not a proposed building area, I would think you'd have to come back to Winnicky.
We have to come back to Winnicky.
Maybe they're not flying to come back to the planning board, but certainly they'd have to. But logically, this would make more sense.
Well, and also it seems like from the top of the lines, it seems like much of that is more than 25% slope.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So it's pretty steep, so you wouldn't be, it's not really buildable.
No, it's not buildable. No, it's not buildable. I mean, we're, we're kind of in a position of these, these two potential building areas state of the art and some of the views, but not build in this way. So you, yeah, you're very much limited, frankly, once you get over the, over the end of there.
So, so this, this part, this part, you know, the building areas, I don't believe is technically required by our pro tip, we just require the building envelopes. We do ask for applicants to show us whether they believe those houses would be located and on a voluntary basis, so we have an understanding. So that's really what this shows here. And then, again, this show where they have those houses. So that's what we're asking.
Anyone else? Planning board members? Any concerns, Kevin, Burton? Call on conversation. I now have a motion to propose a public hearing. Second? Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Jim, I assume you have a draft approval resolution?
We have, well, we have two steps, three really. So the first thing we're going to have to do is go through, because it is an unlisted action with subdivision, short, my own assessment, part two. So I have it up here. Just such as the questions, it's a very good version of, I've been doing lately. It's not the first version, but. And the planning boards are taking a close action, that being the lot line alterations created material conflict with the doctor land use plan zoning regulation. And the answer would be no response impact or moderate flowery impact may occur.
No response?
Okay, without changing the number of blocks, just moving lines.
No impact.
Will the proposed action result in change to the user intensity of the land? Will the action impair the character or quality of the existing community?
No.
Will the proposed action have an impact on the, on the C E A answer? There is no, because we don't have any in my back. Will the proposed action result in no adverse change in the existing level of traffic or affecting existing infrastructure for mass transit, lighting, or?
No.
Will the proposed action cause an increase in use of energy and fail to incorporate reasonably available energy conservation or renewable energy opportunities? There should be no, this is the part that. Will the proposed action impact existing public or private water supplies or public and private waste water treatment utilities?
No.
Will the proposed action impair the character or quality of important historic archaeological, architectural, or aesthetic resources? Will the proposed action result in adverse change to natural resources? Will the proposed action result in increase in potential for erosion, flooding, or drainage problems? And will the action trade it hazard to environmental resources? So with that, I will then fill out a part three, which essentially is just the plan Melody gets to fill out. Do that offline with her signature stating those are found as no. The next step then is to do a seeker's approval. And for this, Metro and Bank LLC subdivision lot line adjustment stating that the proposed action secret approval for a minor subdivision lot line adjustment from the planning board. Metro and Bank LLC is proposing to amend the lot line locations with no change to the number of lots. The applicant secured the required open development area from the town board on June 12th, 2023. And the town of Ryan Beck Planning Board in its role is to establish the agency under seeker upon review of the condition of the short B A F and the associated information hereby issued in negative declaration under seeker gaining environmental impact statement is not required. Stating such will not be prepared in consideration of the minor subdivision for more than 10 properties listed there within the towns. Ten zoning district. And taking the action, the planning board approves the project moved forward and the proposed actions hereby approved for implementation. So we'll change that some of this.
Do I have a motion? Second. Second. I will call the board, I guess, as well, right?
Aye.
And then Sean.
Aye.
I would like to just.
Right, the last four. It's the approval resolution. And this is approval resolution for Metro and Bank LLC for a lot line adjustment at 70 to 100 Daz Lane, then the R A ten zoning district. Reaffirming the actions listed here secret, which from environmental quality review is not required. Short seeker, uh, seeker short B A F parts one, two, and three, as well as secret approval as a resolution have been completed by the part three to finalize this. Based upon submitted information, including the reports from the planning board members and their site list into the property and the open development area approval from the town board finds the work is consistent with the objective stated in Chapter 101 subdivision of land. In respect to the minor subdivision, finding the actions consistent with Town Code Chapter 101 and approving the application of recent locally sheets prepared by Osbell and Waldorf Land Surveyors dated January 23rd, 2023, last revised September 18th, 2024. Authorizing the planning board chair to stamp and sign the site plans listed, uh, subdivision four conditions listed below. And in taking this action, authorizing the planning board secretary to provide the approval resolution and information to the applicant and others for purposes of providing any permits. And remind the applicant that all plans and sketches submitted by the board need to be the same as those submitted to people.
And a motion?
So.
Second? Second? I'll call the board, please. Aye. Sean.
Aye.
And then I.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good call, Dan. The next public hearing for this evening is that of the first person who has a site plan and is permanent for affordable housing.
You can read that one?
Yes.
So we did, excuse me, we did hear originally from Community Realty and Development at our last meeting. I put together quite a few pages of new comments on that and we went out and did a site visit on Friday. And the intent was to hold a public hearing today. I hope there's no one here.
Are there any people here?
From the applicant, from the applicant side.
No, no. It indicated in the letter we received to know that.
So we did receive a letter this afternoon from the applicant. Essentially, do you agree to the whole thing or just want me to summarize? They've asked for us to adjourn the public hearing.
I would read them.
If you can read it.
I would sign it to the record of the letter.
Okay, so this is a letter from Charles Martabano, attorney at law, sent to Melody this afternoon regarding the Community Realty Development Group Inc. workforce housing proposal for affordable housing units at T M B two two three 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 six. Stating, please be advised that the undersigned is Council of Security Realty and Development Group Inc. proponents of the above preference workforce housing development. As you are aware, a secret review of this project had been completed by the town board in a negative declaration issued by a resolution of the town board dated October 15th, 2024. That same resolution referred the application to your board for site plan approval subject to the admonition that the planning board shall not issue its final approval of site plan until such time as the town board has adopted a local law rezoning subject property for proposed workforce housing development in accordance with Section 125 to 6447 of the Town and Ryan Beck Code. Unfortunately, despite diligent efforts to complete and adopt the local law, it has not yet been adopted. As specifically authorized by the name of legislation, the local law will include such items as lock mark parameters which provide for the approval of the site plan consistent with the approved concept plan, which might be inconsistent with the underlying regulations of the BG zoning district. which might be inconsistent with the underlying regulations of the BG zoning district. Hence the admonition that the planning board not approve the site plan until the local law has been adopted. As the local law has not yet been adopted, the applicant requests that your board adjourn the public hearing and take no further action in connection with the site plan until such time as the local law rezoning the property to workforce housing has been adopted. There is nothing foregoing, we will not be appearing tonight, but look forward to meeting with your board and processing of the site plan approval once the local law has been adopted.
So they're asking us to pause on the public hearing. At this point, my recommendation would be to schedule for undetermined date of time. I'm sure exactly when things are going to happen, and then we just have to be noticed. We'll public hearing it on the schedule.
Is that like a range of time they expect? Is it like up to a year? I mean, I, we don't, we don't know, we don't have any idea. The town board, you need to take the action on the down of the local law. I don't know where they are in that process, so, um, we did schedule a public hearing for this evening, and I know there's some people here that may wish to comment on the record, uh, just notice, so we will take public comment at this time if anyone here wishes to comment. And the application. Anyone who is here, um, is public hearing, notice and schedule it.
Hi, um, my name is Thea Murgis and I live in the town of Rhinebeck. And I have been following this not as closely as I probably should, but I'm very much a paper of the construction of affordable housing and if there's anything we can do to help further than on, that would be wonderful to do, and thank you.
Jay Murgis, Thea's wife. Um, I also want to echo my support for it. In order for a community to be intact, fully functioning and successful, it needs to offer housing to people at various price points. I think this kind of housing would be important, uh, for younger residents, perhaps some older residents, and for the workforce, for important things like some of the workers at the hospitals, uh, senior care, restaurants, retail, uh, construction trades, and a number of things. And that we need to have pricing that can bring different kinds of people to the community. Thank you.
Hi, um, my name is John Clark, I'm on the village planning board, and I was on the comprehensive planning committee for the village. Um, comprehensive plan has been adopted by the village board. It has extensive comments on, not particularly this project, but that area, uh, the northwest part of another village. And, uh, on particularly page 15 and pages 42 and 3, so I would urge you to look at those in preparation for future meetings, just to see what, uh, your neighbors think. Um, the village, uh, we have a draft letter, the village planning board. But I won't read it tonight because we're going to talk about it tomorrow, and then it won't be the draft, it'll be a final letter hopefully. So if I assume we're having a continuation of public hearing or a rescheduling of the public hearing, then we'll have a full letter, um, providing village comments. So I, I guess that's all I want to say tonight, just, um, I appreciate your willingness to stick with this project. Uh, I don't think it's a secret, uh, that the planning board fully supports the idea of affordable housing on this project, the plan does as well. So we're interested, our comments are primarily focused on how to integrate this project, which is right on the edge of the village and joining village properties. How to integrate into the village so that it's better walking and, and, uh, street connections. Uh, and how they incorporate the Wells Manor, the Village Green, the 7.6 acre property that is controlled by the same ownership, um, into the project so that it's seamlessly integrated in the village in terms of walkable portion of the village, uh, center. Uh, so that's our main concern. So we'll have formal comments, I assume, after tomorrow night's meeting, we'll send them off to you and then we'll come back when we're done, that's right.
Thank you.
Yes.
John, when those comments are ready, are you going to be providing those to the Rhinebeck Town Board as well?
Uh, probably sure.
Okay, I would ask you to do so, please.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you.
Aye.
You know, John? Um, as Jim indicated, you didn't make a site visit. I don't know if the town board members want to comment at this time on the visit?
Or more walk in the woods?
More than one. I mean, you're welcome to, I think, did the site visit comments are welcome? Or choose to wait, that's also up to you.
Well, we had, uh, a nice sunny day in the wilderness, as, as it were. And, uh, we're able to see, uh, I, I think, uh, a feature of this site that most members of the public are not really aware of. And that's the topography and the drastic changes that are going to be needed to make this site consistent with what Mr. Clark has, um, stated in his, in his, uh, statement here. Uh, are the aspirational goals of the village, which are certainly laudable, is something that I, I think would be important for the town as well. Uh, but the issues of walkability versus, uh, automobile use are very much at play. And, uh, how that is able to function in a site that is so steeply sloped and doesn't really lend itself to, uh, easy pedestrian access is, is a, is a real significant challenge. And there, there's also some concern, uh, not just with the, uh, changes in topography, but also the amount of tree loss that the site is going to expose, that is, is going to require, uh, not just for the construction of the buildings, but also for reconciling some of the differences in, uh, Elton. So I think there's a lot to review, it's not really a slam dunk. And I, I would encourage everybody to take a deep dive and, uh, get into the, into the facts, which is what we're going to have to deal with going forward. I'm certainly an advocate of affordable housing. But whether or not this is the appropriate site for that is what we need to determine.
I could make a couple of comments, maybe if you could put up a slide that has, that shows the topography of the change underneath the site plan? You know, there's, uh, there should be some lines underneath it that show what's going to happen with the hillside.
Yeah.
Yeah, exactly. So can you show both of those at the same time? I didn't realize until we were walking up the route of the drive with Andy, who was explaining what's going to happen, that because of the steepness of the slope, the plan is to, to fill this. To change this line, which now exists, and fill it so it will look like this. Because to get up here, you know, there's a long distance from the road. And what that requires is, I think that what this curly line means here, I didn't see a key anyplace on, on the site plan.
That one there.
Yeah, I think what that means is this is where trees will be cut.
That's the edge of the tree line, so.
Yeah.
This would be where the trees remain.
And, and this is where the trees would be essentially clear cut. Because in order to do a fill here, you have to be able to taper off. This was what was explained to us. Uh, you have to be, be able to taper off the soil, you know? And so what you're going to have here in this even wide open area, which presumably could be planted, but it would no longer have, you know, the existing mature trees that are there now. And then over here, what this is indicating um, is this is the existing line of the hill, which, as I understand it, will be removed. So here, a lot of soil and rock and whatever will be removed to straighten out the, uh, the plateau there. And so, you know, I was imagining what you will see as you're standing on Rhine Cliff Road and looking up, you're pretty much going to be looking up this, uh, drive with this kind of wide open area. And at the top, what you will see is two parking lots, one on the other side of the, of the driveway.
So they did provide initial assessment elevation.
Uh, yeah, it was looking at that.
So this is the overlay on the aerial. As you're saying, this is the area, this line represents where the trees would be cut back. I guess this is ambitious photos. So this, this is, these are the two renderings they provided us.
The Melody?
Yes, I know, does that rendering depict the steepness of that? Or is that?
That is part.
Does that, is, does that rendering depict how steep actually it is? Or is it look like quite flat?
I think that's going to be the, the finished product. And if you look in the, uh, plans, it does show, uh, the change in elevation that the drive is going to have to take the percent grade. It's almost a 10% grade for much of that drive.
It is a 10% grade.
If it's done right, it should be pretty true form, but it's like anything, you know, eventually looks different. If you're watching video, you can't always tell what slope looks like on a, on a video. But it should be pretty true form, but it's, it's always going to be different.
I think it's fair to say, and also the image of the driving line is so heavily wooded now, it's really hard to.
I can't hear.
I, I would say, um, even as you drive by now, it is so, those of you who, um, you know, trekked into the wooded landscape, um, it's, uh, kudos to you, but it's, it's hard to visualize now because it is so heavily wooded. You have this, you have to take it on faith that this is what it will look like because you can't really visualize it now, so, um, you're literally, they're pushbacking into the, into the woods there to try and understand where these buildings are going to be located and what, what the view shed is going to be, um, when the work is completed. So this is our best, um, opportunity to get close to what the applicant is proposing.
Jim, was this visual assessment prepared for the town board or the planning board?
It was all prepared for the town, right?
Okay. And do you know whether anybody, uh, any independent consultant looked at the visual assessment?
Uh, if there's no one else.
Uh, just, I, one question for, uh, Mr. Lyons. The town has completed seeker on this, but that doesn't, uh, obviate any of the requirements of planning board. We still are required to do our review and our assessment. It doesn't mean that we have to have findings that are in alignment with what the town board found in that state required review.
That's my understanding right now, but there are, I'm going, I'm having discussions with the town attorney, and I will have to get back to you to provide him with a more definitive answer to that.
I've, I've just heard some rumblings that, oh, well, we did seeker, and that we passed seeker, and that, that's almost a green light. But the way that I understand it, there are state requirements, and then there are also local requirements. And those local requirements are allowed to be sometimes more strict than what the state requires.
Yes, I think the, the key is going to be how much latitude's been given to the planning board by the town board under the affordable housing provisions of the zoning law. And since this is the first time we're going through that process, we're trying to sort out what it means, and we're working on that.
All right, then, I think we're at the point where we will, uh, motion to continue the public hearing until, uh, under charming the date. Um, because I don't know, I'm not going to speculate that it's two months or three months. So I would still want to continue.
I will move to continue the public hearing until we're done. Until further.
I have a second, second, I was in favor, I, I always set your motion first. Thank you, you're most appreciated, and we will see you in some capable future, John Murgis from the village. Thank you very much.
Melody?
Yes.
There's been some talk about the possibility of a meeting between the town board and the planning board. Do you want to work with the planning board members, whether there are lawyers to do that?
Uh, sure, do you want to, I mean, that was sort of where your.
In a piece of correspondence.
Right, a piece of correspondence, let's have me, um, pull that up.
So you do look at the very end of Mr. Kanski's.
Yes, um, if the planning board, if you and the town planning board feel there is a need for a meeting between the planning board and the town board to discuss and flesh out these issues, please let us know. But I think that there's an offer. There, there are issues that have been identified as having to do with bulk regulations and other parts of the existing zoning law that, um, may be considered for waivers or other things like that as the town board lays down its law, which it's entitled to do, I believe, within the law.
I really can't hear what you're saying, I'm sorry. Um, maybe you can use Tom's mic, if you got it, Mike?
I have a mic, so I'm saying that Mr. Kanski, um, is saying, uh, that he is, uh, that if the plan, planning board feels there's a need for a meeting between the planning board and the town board to discuss and flesh out issues and the issues, if he has, uh, some of the ones he's identified, uh, relate to bulk regulations, um, whether the applicant should adhere to them or not, um, that he's willing to, um, convene a meeting between the town board and the planning board to discuss how the town board will go forward, what thoughts and considerations the planning board may have around that. Does that summarize it, John?
Yes, I think that's right. I think we might also want to discuss if, if a meeting like that were to be held, to discuss coordination of action between the two boards.
Okay. I, yes.
Are we, are we going to see a version of that law?
That's a good question, and one that I think should be. I think that's exactly what John's last point was, which was coordination between the boards.
Yeah, I, this is a good question, Sean, I don't have an answer to it at the moment.
But regardless, you will see it before you can take any action. This, this board cannot take action until that essential overlay is laid down.
Right, but that, that law could strip us of potential.
We do, we do.
Yes, that's.
Is this something other than, uh, 125, 64.4, I think it is, that the workforce and affordable housing floating district? I think it is, that the workforce and affordable housing floating district regulation is already on the books. Are they adopting something that's different from?
Well, they have to amend the zoning law to create the district that would allow this project to go into that location.
Right.
And so that's the law that they're talking about. The 125-64.4 is already on the books.
But it's not technically laid down on the property.
Because it's a.
That's what they have.
It's a floating district.
It's not towed, but it's floating, right?
And that's the way that I read it as well. And it's really just, it's an administrative step to say that what we've been talking about all this time is using this zone in this village gateway lot.
Yes, except I think that the vision for the law is that it will address some of the elements and issues that are presented by the site. As Sean said, it's possible that that law may waive some provisions of the zoning law.
And it appears to me that it would be useful for this board to have a list of the parts of the zoning law that to us don't seem to allow this particular.
No, I can't hear you yet.
It seems to me that it would be useful for this board to have a list of parts of the zoning law, requirements of the zoning law in various places that don't seem to match this development. So that if the town board wishes to proceed with virtually this, you know, design exactly, then they ought to know what they need to waive in order for us to approve a site plan.
I think that would be, it's a purpose of the discussion that Warren is offering.
I think that.
But you need to come to such a meeting prepared. I mean, I've been going through the zoning law and, you know, I've got all kinds of yellow marks on sections of the zoning law. It's a lot of work to go through the zoning law and there are a lot of places that there are issues with this.
Yes, I agree.
So it seems to me that before we would want to have a meeting, we would want to do this work together so that we would say, here are the things that we think prevent this the way it's currently designed. Prevent the planning board from site plan approval. Now, either there is some possibility to change certain things, but if there is no possibility to change because it's a very restricted lot, then the town board will have to choose to waive these issues for this development.
That's correct.
So when are we going to do the work?
That's a good question.
And I don't think you'll get a, no, that you won't get to an answer without agreeing to a meeting between the town board and the planning board. It seemed to me that that was the logical next step. I would not have a solution to tell them what to bring to the table.
I think the thing to do would be to communicate to the town board saying that you're accepting the offer, that we'd have to make arrangements, you know, there are logistical arrangements to be made for the both boards to meet. I would anticipate that this would probably be a special meeting. Might even happen in the daytime, I don't know. And then, but I think that, you know, what Edna is suggesting is correct. I think in an ideal sense, it would be good to be able to come into that meeting understanding where the points are, where the project, the concept version of the project doesn't meet the site plan requirements.
And we ought to be able to go in with, we ought to be able to go in with the board as a whole agreeing, here are the 18 places in the zoning law that we, as a complete board, think they either have to waive or change. Not just Edna coming in with hers, somebody else coming in with theirs. You know, that's not.
Yeah, I agree. A consensus would be the most useful.
I'm happy to compile any comments that anyone has, like we did for the previous memo, and at least start the bottom notes and add them to me and eventually we'll get to the point where I can pull together a memo. Part of the thing to remember, I put together a lot of comments on this, but one of the biggest comments was that the application was not completely for our review. As you know, they're putting that landscape plan and have some other plans. So, you know, that's still a missing part of the option that has to be forward as well for you to know exactly what it is. Or I guess some of your comments might be. We only had the jumper that made for site plans. So there's some of that too, which may or may not be interesting. There's still some materials we need.
Right. I think it's useful to go back to that memo that dates to June of 2022, I think, and look at the issues that were brought up and see how many of them have been addressed by current plans. Because a lot of things, a lot of cans have got to kick down the road. And I think one of the important features of the requirements that Edna is talking about is that they do grow out of the spirit of the LWRP, the Ryback Plan, and also the Village Comprehensive Plan. And before the town goes waiving those provisions, I think everyone needs to take a very careful look at how those apply to those aspirational goals.
So I think I'm hearing that people are interested in communicating to Mr. Rapansky that we are accepting his offer to the meeting, and Jim will then propose better all of our past comments and he has invited you also to share with him now if you have additional comments that came to the fore either through your study of the law or in terms of field observations that those of you who pushwhacked into the property, if you came out of there well and healthy but you have new things to add to the list that you didn't see before, but were the result of the recognizance of the other day, please get that information to Jim as soon as possible. Warren closes by saying he's happy to schedule such a meeting as soon as possible. I think he is interested in moving this forward expeditiously. So as soon as you can get the stuff to Jim, then we on our end can at least be prepared to go into the meeting with some substance. Does that go with everyone? So did I get a motion in a second? I'm continuing to.
Just one question. Is this going to, this is just going to be between the town board and the planning board?
Sounds like it.
That's what the invitation is.
So you made the motion.
I made the motion.
Then I have a second. Okay, then I take a vote? Remind me?
All those.
All I.
Yes, those extension. Okay, thank you very much. The next meeting scheduled for this evening is that of LaFaro School, Michigan, 7085, 7119, site plan and special use permit, daycare for a nursery school. We received communication, I believe, this afternoon asking us to continue the public hearing. Also, I do think though that since our last meeting, Jim received communication from DOT.
Yes.
And that was since the last meeting? So perhaps you will summarize what we received from DOT as to their status and standing on their part of this approval process.
Right, so as everyone knows, the DOT access, especially driveway access, is down for nine. So I did recapture the meeting just to find out where we stood and asked them to kind of keep us informed of where things stand. I got an email back from the driver/crementerian and sent an email to everyone, the applicant, myself, a few others. Such as stating that they needed to submit additional information, the application form and a fee so DOT can start doing the project in detail. I still believe that DOT review is a really critical part of this whole thing. So I think we need to understand where they're coming from, what they may or may not require as part of the application. So at this point, it sounds like DOT has quite a good review of the application detail part of the deal.
They listed a number of things. Did they not, in your memory, that they need to have? I think you can summarize them.
So Bill Oros said that they are receipt of the conceptual plan and application for the subject project, which was submitted in November. They need a lead agency request from the town of Ryback and the town of Red Hook, showing that the SEAKER process was initiated. Probably they don't have that. So they did request a copy of the town resolution and the local planning board's formal letter declaring intent to activate agency under SEAKER. Once that's been, once that letter's been received, they'll provide an IS dot SEAKER tracking number. The review does not constitute an approval of the project. It's anticipated a highway work permit will be required as part of the proposed action. As mentioned previously, a detailed engineering review is necessary and required for the issuance of the highway work permit. They gave information on how you do that. Talked about the fee schedule, the project fee. The applicant has to submit a incomplete assigned perm 33.com as part of the submission. That's a DOT form that clarifies the type of development. They noted that per section 103 of the submitted perm 33, the project is developed in Montessori school, whereas section 168 mentioned that the project goals to develop a daycare center in private residence. So they wanted clarification on that. Once a SEAKER number is established, the applicant may then submit a complete set of planning documents that include one copy of the traffic assessment PDF form, including traffic turn counts, site generated traffic returns, the built year and crash history data with the diagram, and updating the perm 33. And they also have to submit a set of site plans showing the proposed access, necessary details, addressing several comments that include a complete set of drawings that have existing conditions, demolition plan, proposed plan, and other necessary details within the IS dot right of way, showing labeling the highway boundary right of way to avoid any confusion, all existing utilities, confirming if any utility work is going to be done, a turning template for school buses and delivery trucks, whichever, for whichever is longer, discussions on available site distances for school buses and delivery trucks, lines in the intersection, setting lines, station numbers, other driveways, driveway profile, typical cross section of the driveway with slopes, saw cut lines, where the two match up. They talked about needing back to back one way signs installed at an angle of 45 degrees for the travel lane. For each driveway, they want dimensions and details of all the signs to be installed, standard pavement details compliant to IS dot standards, including layer thickness and tack coats and other things. A clarification of any work zone controls that will be required during work. I noted that he copied both Red Hook and Ryback planning departments. So that's in detail for the DOT application standard. You got, I think, is a.
The only other thing I figured I saw in your log is that one building that was odd is grandfathered in, so there would not be any.
Need for variance. Yeah, I thought there might be need for variance, but because of when it was built, it is grandfathered, so it doesn't need variance for the sub. And I did love the.
Okay. So you're all up to date now. At your request, I think we should continue. Well, I will ask, it is a public hearing, so.
Not a real business.
No, why here?
We never opened the door. Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I did the same thing. This is a public hearing, so is there anyone here? Anyone left? All right, so we'll continue the public hearing until, that would be January 21. I'm going to give her benefit of the doubt here. She feels she may have some progress to report at the next meeting, so we'll schedule for January 21st and we'll get an update from DOT and we'll make a determination at that meeting as to whether we think it will take longer. So it will be the 21st. I have that motion.
So.
Motion second, all those in favor. I oppose extension, motion carries. Now we are moving on to.
Can I add one more thing, Melody? On this, planning board members might recall at the last meeting that Jim had asked me to look into the question having to do with the authority of the planning board with regards to the driveway easement that's on the property and with an eye toward understanding whether we were going to have to feather that into whatever decision the board makes. The, I provided Jim with a written response today on that, but the short version of it is that the courts have ruled that what you can do pursuant to a zoning law and what you can do pursuant to an easement or restrictive covenant are two completely separate things. And as a result, planning boards don't have the jurisdiction to consider those things when they're making decisions. So to use an example, even if there's a deed restriction on a piece of property that doesn't allow a particular use, if the zoning law allows that use in that location and the applicant has applied for permission to conduct that use pursuant to the zoning law, the planning board would have to go ahead and grant approval there. Could not use the deed restriction as a reason for not either processing the application or not approving the use.
So anything after that would be a private civil matter?
Yes, exactly. So if there's a, I mean, I think it was a good idea for Jim to be thinking about it because the applicant should be thinking about it. But technically, what would happen is if anything that this board approves for that project, if that ends up violating easement, it'll be up to the two parties to the easement to sort the legalities of that out amongst themselves.
Thank you. All right. That brings us to the last quarter of business for the season, which is that of old business. Darren Prince and Kelly Swiss, Akron Hook Road, site plan review for the construction of single family dwelling, covered terrace of new ground, old wood fence.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the planning board. My name is Darren Derry. I'm the attorney for the applicants, Darren Prince and Kelly Swiss. I submitted a letter to you on September 2nd, which I hope you all received and had a chance to review. Afterwards, I received Mr. Lyons' memo and I had a chance to review his memo. And I just want to comment on a few things coming out of that review. And while I read every case that he cited in that memo and I have a different view of what the standard is here on the note, I feel like it's a more expansive standard than what he cited in his memo, which was strictly a materiality, change in circumstances. The case law that I saw also indicated that presenting new evidence and rescinding a note that should not have been issued in the first instance are reasons to change it or rescind it. But I'm not here tonight to debate the standards. What I saw in every case law or case that I read, including Mr. Lyons, is that no decision was made on the note until after a public hearing, not before. And I understand from a review of your last meeting that you took a straw poll on it and with some discussion about voting tonight before the public hearing on the note. And I would submit that that is not something you should do or can do. Because even the cases that Mr. Lyons cited in his memo, his primary cases, the decision was made after the public hearing. So what we're coming here tonight to ask is to allow us to present our evidence and make a case on that note as well as on the Akron Hook Road Drive, which we believe is the appropriate direct access out to Akron Hook Road is the direct proper access out from this piece of property. We have yet to hear or see, and I don't know if anyone has an update on it, the Hudsonia report, which, you know, was discussed way back when in June and we haven't seen anything yet. Is there any update on that?
The Hudsonia report is done and should be in our hands very shortly.
Okay. Thank you. We would appreciate getting that. We would appreciate getting that as soon as you receive it. But again, you know, we would like the chance to present our case on, on this issue on the original note. We have yet to see any evidence that there was any kind of a 288, town law 288 granted in this case, or back in '03. I didn't see that in Mr. Lyons' memo, I didn't see it in any of the information that he presented, and that is the very approval that looks at the issues of emergency access for Barrett Tyler Drive. And I did not see that done, I don't know if that's something that John saw, but I did not see that in the record at this point. In fact, we haven't even looked at anything that, any of the information that was cited in his memo regarding the background of this, because when I first inquired about it a few meetings ago, I was told it was not retrievable. So we don't have independent review of that at this point. So what we're asking tonight is really just to give us a chance to present, have a hearing on all the issues, a holistic hearing, and then make a decision. You've got a letter from the neighbor, the neighbor supports our proposal to come directly out to Acker Hook Drive. And the reason that he does that is because in 2021, he was granted alternative access. And that, that did change the circumstances for Barrett Tyler, because he's no longer coming through there, only a very short distance from Acker Hook Road. And he raises the issue of the emergency access. We have not seen a holistic evaluation or comparative between environmental impacts from the original access to what we're proposing. And we think once you see that and fully review it, you will agree that coming directly out to Acker Hook from our property is the preferred alternative. There has been changes in regulations. At the beginning of this year, effective January 1st, the DEC amended Article 24 of ECL, and they're pretty much have dispensed with all the prior wetlands standards that they had before, they're focusing on burnout pools now. And that is exactly what we have on our property, which we showed you and was fully delineated and certified, and that's an environmental impact versus what's been discussed about someone across the road with a wetland. So all we're asking tonight is for you to consider not voting on the issue with the note tonight, and putting that ahead for the public hearing, and allow us to present more information, have the neighbors speak, and then make a decision.
Thank you.
I recommend that the board grant the request and schedule a public hearing for the meeting in January, we can get the process started.
That could be the January 21st. I made my motion to schedule a public hearing for January 21st, along the Darren Prince and Kelly Swiss application. I have the motion, so I'll second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, extension, motion carries, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Do you want to speak?
I, I would. And what, what I'd like to see in preparation for the public hearing in January, and thank you for granting that, is going back to the March 4th meeting, there was extensive discussion between you folks about comparing the two driveway locations. And I know things have gone off the rails between like then and now, so, but going back, like, like, I, I challenge you to re-watch that video and hear your own words of what you were discussing at that moment, because you were talking about having all of your consultants review one driveway location versus the other driveway location. And since then, we've only received information that has looked at the driveway off of Barrett Tyler, and nothing off of Acker Hook. So all of, all of the escrow money and all of the reports that we've received from the planner, and from the attorney, and I anticipate from Hudsonia, but I look forward to receiving that report, have been focused on the driveway from Barrett Tyler. So I hope that, like, before the public hearing, we can have a legitimate discussion as to what are the facts between the environmental impact, the historic impact, between one driveway location and the other? Because in my, in my professional opinion, from every aspect that you could look at these two driveways, the driveway off Acker Hook is preferable from every single standard that the planning board is looking at.
Thank you. We'll review, John, as expected, the Hudsonia Report, which I expect to be informative. We will also pull up the report, the engineering report from CPL, which I thought was very expensive, of the video information, so we'll look at what we receive, and I think we're all set for tonight.
Is it, is it impactful to the board to, to understand what the, what the neighbors, the neighboring properties?
Well, we're gonna take that all up for a public hearing. We're not gonna get into the discussion until you're scheduled for a public hearing, and I think we'll look forward to January 21st.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening.
I believe there's some other business scheduled to come before this is secret. So, before I ask for a motion for June, may I wish you a happy holidays, thank you for the good work you've done this year, that you're here this time, and we have a brand new year to look forward to. So now I could have a motion for June.
Sure.
Motion second, all those in favor?
Aye.